I call to order the Brown County Board of Education regular meeting, May 2nd, 2023. Mr. Moody, would you lead us in prayer please?
Good morning, thank goodness time is now your grace, Lord. Jesus came and died for us in our sins. What I should try to do with the board today is make decisions if they ever have a school, Lord, we just thank you for that opportunity to be able to work with children as a job each day, Lord, I pray for their safety, physically, mentally, spiritually, pray to be able to teach or staff, Lord, and whatever we do, Lord, I just keep our backs focused on you and helping these kids. Thank you for all you do for us, Lord, you're the best, my brother.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the April for 2023 minutes?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Moody, did anybody sign up for public comment period?
No, sir, they did not.
Do I have a motion to close public comment period?
I make a motion to close public comments.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items, administrator updates. Mr. Long?
Yes, sir.
Would you go ahead and lead first?
Okay, I appreciate the school board. Good morning to everybody, superintendent. The Indian parent committee wanted to request that this meeting are to be on the agenda and we have some new members and they are trying to reorganize the Indian parent committee and they're working on updating their bylaws. And I'd just like to let them introduce themselves to you. These are the officers, the chairman, vice chairman, and the chairperson for that committee. And I'd just like to take the time to introduce them to the school board.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Margaret Tucikowski. I go by MAC. I'm the Steuburg Recreation Supervisor. I'm the chairperson this time.
Okay, thank you.
Zach particularly, everybody else is my bar. I'm the supervisor at the Steuburg, and I'm the last chair.
My name is Clarissa Askew and I am an administrative assistant at the Steuburg with the Health and Housing Program and I'm the secretary of the.
Okay, stay standing, Clarissa, if you would. You're on the agenda. Can you go ahead and tell us, go ahead and tell us what you wanted to?
I think that was made.
It was made, yeah, it was made just to introduce on who we are.
And I don't know if MAC or if the rest of you want to do it, but just talk a little bit about what y'all do and some of us sit on the committee as well and the school is due to represent the students. Maybe talk a little bit about what y'all do to accomplish.
Well, I'm the chairperson next school year. We're hoping to get our meetings back ready for updating our bylaws. We have a couple of positions, our membership positions to fill. Our goal is to have better communication between the parents and the school system and to keep in touch with the students that need help and try to get them up to par because I think everybody's kind of behind due to COVID. So we're just trying to get started again and hopefully have a good school year and we're here for the kids as much as you all are and we hope to have a good communication between the two as well as with the parents.
Thank you, appreciate you. Okay. This, so. What do you got?
I don't have a whole lot for you. Things are really busy at the high school, but it's just our normal end of year activities. We're getting ready for testing, we'll start that on May 22nd. Coming up this Thursday, we are having a senior celebration day at the high school for all of our seniors. It's a fun day for them to celebrate their decision after high school, whether that's a college or university or joining the workforce, military. It's just a fun day to celebrate them and their accomplishments. So that's Thursday. We also are going to be recognizing our senior baseball and softball players tonight is their senior day game. And after the game, there's going to be a Low Country Bowl and burgers for all the families and fans and it's just going to be a good celebration. Prom is this Saturday, so we're getting ready for that. Really busy around the high school this week, prepared for that. Our banquets we have coming up, we have the academic banquet on May 16th and the athletic banquet on May 22nd. So those are coming up and.
They're both at 6 o'clock, exactly.
They are both at 6 o'clock, yes.
And if you plan to attend those and you have not told Ms. Klein, you need to do that today in order to have a seat at the table.
Yes.
She has, Ms. Klein has requested we stick around after the meeting so she can make a list of who's coming and who's not. Thank you, go ahead.
I think that's all that I have on my list. And then I have some field trips whenever you're ready for that.
Okay, that's next, okay. Okay, the elementary school, see, Danny, seems out of here to represent.
No, they're, they're not.
All right, that's fine. And this Walsh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Same as the high school, it's getting tested time, so we are extremely busy and lots of things happening. We have a group of students from all of our STEM classes that went to App State last week for a STEM day and they were able to participate in various hands-on activities. They got sent in on a physics class and the students have been very excited about talking about, they got to hold a human brain. So it was a really good experience for the kids that got to go. The eighth grade trip was a success, kids were well behaved, they had a great time. Their favorite part was they spent the night at the Great Wolf Lodge in Charlotte and got to use the water park and they talked a lot about the sand dunes and so they had a really good time. We took the students that were unable to go on the trip, they did a lot of fun activities through the week and then we treated them to bowling and pizza one day, so they were, got to be entertained too, so. We are celebrating teacher appreciation this week at the middle school, so we are, have, you know, fun things planned for our teachers all week, so we're happy to do that. Our teachers work very hard and so we're glad that we can do something small for them. Seventh grade math has been working hard on geometry units, they've been talking about triangles and different types of angles and the students have adjusted really well to the teaching change with Mr. Cape being there and he feels like that they're really improving in their mathematical performance, so things are going well with the math. Again, I want to brag on Crystal Watt who's been in there and really helped him. Lynn Lynn also joined our staff after Christmas. She is doing a fantastic job in our CTE classroom and she's working with the teachers doing a lot of cross-curricular type activities. She's been in a lot of math skills, helped prepare kids for testing with cooking and measuring and all those things and sewing and, you know, measuring, doing angles and she has also been working with our social studies class. She has been cooking food from like the Holocaust, German food from World War II. And then this week, they're, they're celebrating Cinco de Mayo and so they've been doing some Hispanic food as well, so she's doing a great job working with teachers. May 12th, we'll be having our spring fling dance, which is our end of the year dance for students. And we started last year, so we didn't want kids to have to buy big dresses and stuff, so we call it a hoedown and they wear just their jeans and boots and that was lots of fun last year. Discovery students through Western Carolina University, they went last week for their overnight camping trip. Joanne Nott accompanied them, kids had a great time, I don't know why, but always it seems like when they go, it's either cold or it rains, so it rained on them a little bit, but they still got to canoe and fish and hike and just had a great time, so that was a great trip. Field day for the middle school is scheduled for May 15th and then we start our EOGs on May 17th. Students have organized dodgeball teams and we'll be having a dodgeball tournament on May 22nd and 23rd. And then we'll have our last reward day on May 25th. We have several people in the community and businesses that have donated money for us to buy incentives to encourage kids to do well on their EOGs. And so kids will be awarded tickets for various things and go in drawings for some of the prizes. We got that idea from the elementary school, so we were glad to be able to do that. And we'll also be recognizing students for perfect attendance, honor roll, good behavior, those kind of things, so. Our track team at the conference track meet last week, week before last, they finished second in the conference, they've had a very successful season. Girls softball is still doing excellent, but the way the bylaws read, I don't think they're going to get to play in the tournament because it divides up into an east division and a west division, but they, I went over and watched them yesterday at Hazel and they beat Hazel 14 to 2. If you've not seen them play, there's two more opportunities for home games on Wednesday and Friday and those little girls are awesome. Little boys team, they are struggling a little bit, but they've come a long way, so hopefully we're really building the baseball team, so hopefully we'll see some progress with them, so that's it.
What grade is the, or for the dance, the spring fling?
Sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Okay.
So we try to do it outside in like the courtyard if the weather permits, so.
You mentioned, and I smiled when you said this, you don't have to stand up, about holding the brain.
Yes.
When I was teaching, I had kids see a cancer or a smoker's lung and they actually saw it, Latisha's shaking her head, so she was one of them and saw it. I don't know about Erica, but she saw that. It was a female lung and it was black.
Yeah, they enjoyed that, they talked about it. I do have the elementary updates if you want me to give them.
Yes. Okay, all right.
So the elementary school had a very successful Charleston trip this past 1st of April. Everyone had a great time on it. A parent meeting for next year's trip with the fourth graders have already occurred and we have already had people start signing up for that trip for next year. This past Thursday on April 27th was kindergarten registration and 72 students have registered for kindergarten for the next school year and we also expect for some more kids to sign up as well. The sunshine committee hosted the father-daughter dance at the high school this past Saturday. And from the pictures, it looked like everybody had a great time with that. We at the elementary school have been doing an EOG academy for third through fifth grade where students get extra EOG help. We are having approximately 25 to 35 students take advantage of this opportunity. And the EOG breakfast blast off for parents will be held Tuesday, May 9th at the RES cafeteria from 9:30 to 10:30. Parents will be given information on the state criteria to score a three, four, or five in each subject and information will be provided for parents to understand at meeting and exceeding growth for the school year for each of those tests. RES has a field day scheduled for May 11th with a rain day being May 10th. And we will begin EOG testing at the elementary school on May 15th. And RES is presenting to the board multiple teacher assistants to hire for next school year. Teacher positions will be posted soon. The number of positions will depend on class size and current employees possibly moving to other positions within the school system and we hope to hire four teacher positions at the gen meeting.
Thank you. That's the first time Ms. Shay Walter Mullin, actually, you know her, okay, just, she's one of my former students. All right, Son, do you have anything for us?
I would just share that we took 16 of our noble knights to Whisper Mountain on Friday and then again on Saturday and it was amazing. They all got some really good team skills and then we ate some meals together and just got to spend a lot of time up there and really debrief and calm down for this last couple of weeks. It is wonderful. I know now why all the kids want to go.
Thank you.
What's the noble knights?
That's our program that we have for our kids who were recommended or selected by their peers as being somebody who is trustworthy and easy to talk to.
Hi, good morning. I just have some numbers to share with you. As always, I try to equip you with our social work counseling and nurse numbers, the new packet of information for the month of April. I do remember those.
I knew you did when I saw you.
So unfortunately, we have had some situations that have required a lot of attention from those skilled people that we have on our team, our nurses, counselors, and social workers and I applaud their efforts the month of April. You can see through your reports, we had a handful of crises that we responded to very appropriately and I know that I try to brag on this team as often and as frequently as I can. They are an amazing group of individuals who devote every single day to building up the lives of students and I think you'll see that in our report. Don't have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. This Moody, do you have anything for us?
Not this one, or this one. Well, I'd like to bring Mr. Long, but Ms. Moody just had a state review with child nutrition department and we've not got the official report back, but as we had the exit review, she had an excellent administrative review visit and they were, to me, a nuisance that was said about our child nutrition program and she has virtually nothing to do with corrective action, so I thought that was a great visit, that's a testament to how hard she works and people that work with her to make the child nutrition program for her children.
Thank you. Ms. Park, do you have anything for us?
Not much, we're just wrapping up the school year and we're trying to plan for summer with our new budget that Lester's going to be presenting. We did have a literacy night in April and we're hosting our Panwood Derby this week, so that's it, please.
Why, do you have anything for us, because you're not on the agenda, so.
Just testing, full speed ahead. As you've heard from several of the principals there, testing's coming up pretty soon, I believe. We have eight instructional days before the testing set or testing window opens. Doesn't necessarily mean that's the day they're going to start testing, but that's when they can start testing, so about every minute of my day, I know I was voted to making sure that accommodations are flowing through right and in the testing system and stuff, so it's just full speed ahead on EOGs and ELCs.
Thank you. Ms. Moody, do you have any security updates?
No, the one issue we constantly have to look at is, especially last month, is the, you know, there's a lot of foot traffic in town and there's been several cases where foot traffic has ended them on our elementary campus because there's just no way to secure it the way it's laid out, so both you can correct me wrong and I find my mistake, but over the last few months, we've had, we've had to arrest some, we've had to ban some, so that's, that's one issue we're really trying to figure out how to get it through up on, which I'm not sure if we can in short-term use school, but anyways, it can be scary sometimes on those things, getting out of our kids, so we're trying to act.
How much signage do we have around the elementary campus?
We've got about everywhere, don't we, I mean, most.
I mean, all the buildings I know, but I mean.
Well, the perimeter, most entry points there are, but you can come on campus anywhere. You'd have to have a continual sign all around, you know, so.
My biggest problem is the lower gym parking lot.
Or we have a preschool, you know, but it's, even though they don't write signs anyway, I mean, the child's not going to get in.
But I know it says, "For the home campus, you need to check in at the office."
One thing we are going to do too, we're going to connect the fence, our lower programs, we've had some issues down there too, people come there after hours and we're going to try to connect the fence to the bank to keep things off of outside school hours and it's really sad this night, we probably talked about this, that, you know, you have some families that like to use it, at the same time, we're having other issues of people with drugs or we're going to make a kid go there and use it, people use the bathroom after hours and have to go with it the next day. So we're going to try and start lowering that fence out there where we can block people off outside school hours and we're going to post it, you know, we're going to have to start trying to be trespassing, you know, which is unfortunate, but we're going to try to keep our kids safe.
Is there any way around that, around that playground down there that we can put, if we're going to fence it, there is a fence, correct?
Yeah, but it's, for the road, the road goes in from the bottom, it goes, it goes to football field, that is where most people come in. We're going to take the upper fences top of the hill and bring it to the bottom of the hill because we have parents, we're people, got parents and people parking two hours before school's out, so we're going to bring that down to one security and then we're going to put a fence from the baseball field, right Kevin, up to the hill, I mean, people can still scale it or whatever, they're going to work a little harder, but we're going to put one from there up there, so we sort of double, double fences for people and then we're going to post it.
And I do know we dart in the windows.
Yes, thanks to Safe Schools Grant and then this night has also found money, we are starting to, shades are horrible in schools, they're talking about malfunction, there's nasty, but we're taking sections at a time to put tent up and that's one thing, we've got ours open and tinted, we're trying to do sections at a time where people can't look in the buildings, you know, especially for school safety, one thing is if they can't see kids, they can either yawk at them, you know, if it's a bit of pressure or have a shoe tent up, they can only shoot what they see, so and there will be energy efficient in our shoe棚, so it takes your center really likely to understand that what we've done.
Yeah, we were able to find some money through the SFR Act where we had allocated it for air quality and I mean, really, tint on the windows is much better than those arcade lines that collect all the dust and they have to be hot some point, so that's one way that we're able to find the money to pay for some.
Yeah, they can't see in, you know, it's good the kids can see out, you know, get a little bit of sun, so it's overall, I think it's, it's a really good thing, so.
And one more thing before I stop, okay, if we're going to move that fence down there, that, I mean, that is, that playground is just open for the public. Is there any way that we can put something on there so anyone coming by cannot see children in there and know that there's children on the.
At the lower playground?
Yes, that they couldn't be an open park.
We can put that shade, they do a fencing for baseball field.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
That's what I was thinking about, because I thought, I've been waiting for that reason over the school, over the high school, even though that campus is more closed in, I thought that was an excellent idea.
Well, it would give, but it's like time, most longer fences only three, four foot high.
I know, I know.
So you're going to be, you can still see over, but.
That's always been a concern because we're so.
Well, the whole, the whole campus is concerned, I mean, really.
I know, but it's so open when kids are down there playing.
I want to use this as another opportunity to say, we really think we worked toward a different elementary campus that could be more safer.
Yes, absolutely.
Bum 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 is not what I'm talking about.
We're always thinking about, you know, every opportunity, I think it needs to be said, that needs to be in our, you know, short-term and long-term plans to look at a more safe and secure elementary school.
Thank you, all. Ms. Shay.
Just a couple of things. Yesterday, we had exceptional children's field day at Robbinsville High School. We had 90 EC students come out and join us and participate in that and it went really well. The enthusiasm that the students have to receive medals and compete like that was just a very joyful experience, I think everyone, I heard a lot of people basically saying a lot of positive things and very thankful for that opportunity for students to compete in events, it was just a great day. As way as preschool, we have a field day coming up also for preschool on May the 9th out here in the football field. The graduation for preschool is May the 25th from 6 to 8 at Robbinsville High School Auditorium. If you're about to join us for that, we are still accepting applications for preschool. Right now, we have 33, we can take up to 54, so we're really trying to get the word out for that, pretty preschoolers, trying to have enough to have three rooms for next year and be able to budget that, so that is a high, a high priority for us at this time, so other than that, that's all.
I'd like to add to that is that each of the students, athletes yesterday had a peer person, peer helper with them from the high school and that would be really nice to see all those high school kids out there one on one helping those students.
I can't say that if you've never been, it is the most rewarding thing to watch those high school students follow those kids around the track cheering them on and, you know, just providing encouragement. It's a wonderful opportunity for both exceptional children and our student athletes, it's, it's great, so hopefully next year, now that, I want to try to work with the other schools to see if we can start back and have some local competition with surrounding schools, you know, that makes it even better, but yesterday was good, but we'll always offer some of the work kids, so I'm just glad to get back at it because we've not been able to host anything in the last couple of years due to COVID and they were having.
They have state special limits, they must worry about that.
Yeah, so, and you know, a lot of the counties are still reluctant to have or to collaborate with the other surrounding counties due to that, so we just, that's a thing for me to work on this summer is to see what we can get into place for next school year.
Thank you, Ms. Shay.
You're welcome.
Field trips. Somebody said they had a field trip, was it McHale or?
I have one for you, I have some.
You may have.
Go ahead and I'll add who we have.
Okay, I have one for the sci girls for this summer. It will be an overnight trip, May 31st through June 2nd. They are planning to travel to Wake Forest University and NC State University on their way to the North Carolina Aquarium and they've got some behind-the-scenes tours and things like that that these students will have the opportunity to do. It would be 10 students and the chaperone would be Ben and Amber Davis for the sci girls program.
How many kids are going?
10.
Okay, you have any more?
The other information that I have would be for the junior senior trip for the year of 2025.
Oh, okay.
So it would be like current sophomores looking for a couple years.
So we wouldn't have to vote on that, would we?
Well, the only thing is they want to look at getting some planning and look for the city where they could, you know, I think they're looking at doing some alternating of locations possibly.
Yes.
With even Puerto Rico being an option, I'm sure.
That is, that's our hope, we've had a decrease in interest and so they're trying to alternate between kind of the traditional New York and DC and Mr. Davis has been going around and kind of doing some polls and getting some information from these kids where they would be interested in traveling to and their number one choice would be Puerto Rico. So he's found some information for all that, which again, would be 2025, but the cost of that is about $2,400 and so if we could go ahead and begin planning that and talking to students, they can go ahead and enroll and their monthly payment is around $100 so that it's not so much of a hardship at, you know, one time. And then they have another one in Florida that they are interested in as an alternate location, it goes to Key Largo and visits, let's see, the Pennaki Camp Coral Reef State Park, so that would be their alternate there and it's about $2,000 and so if we could go ahead and start planning and that would be the choice, it would be about $95 a month for families.
What are they planning on going this year? And then, was it, was it New Orleans?
I think so.
So have they conflicted that way with deciding, have New Orleans?
No, they have not, I'm sorry.
Was that the plan for next year to do the Washington and New York and then next year?
And then the next year, something different.
Something like that and go back to the Washington and New York.
Oh, you're talking about, that's what you, yes, your Washington and New York.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about, that's what you, yes, your Washington and New York.
So kind of alternate years.
So theoretically, since more than just seniors to go, you could go on both trips.
Right.
You know, if you wanted to.
Yeah, just to offer them more opportunities to see what's around.
All right, do I have a motion to approve first the science girls, sci girls' trip to Wake Forest and North Carolina State on the thirty-first of May through June second? Do I have a motion to approve that?
Yes, I approve the sci girls.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Now, do I have a motion to allow them to, the principals or whoever's in charge of it, Erica and David, to begin preparation for the two thousand twenty-five junior senior trip? Possibly to Florida, possibly to Puerto Rico. This would be just giving them permission to, to start planning for it.
I believe we get permission to go ahead and start the twenty-five trip to either Puerto Rico or Florida for, for the juniors and seniors.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, anyone else?
I've got one.
Oh, you've got one.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
So I need permission to take three students and myself and Stuart Nelmes to Charlotte. It is at the Thunderbird Y M C A camp. It is a leadership summit for teens. And we hosted Ms. Karen Fairley from D P I last month. And when she got home, she was so impressed with some of our kids that she called me back and invited us to bring three of our students, so everything is free. We just need permission to go spend the night, it's the nineteenth and the twentieth, we'll return on the twenty-first. The nineteenth is a testing day, so we will not leave until all, all three students have completed their testing, obviously.
Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Pringle's request to take three students to Charlotte at the Thunderbird Y M C A camp? They will leave late on the nineteenth of May and return on the twenty-first. Do I have a motion to approve this trip?
I have a motion to approve the Y M C A trip, Mr. Green.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Any more field trips? All right. All right, Mr. Green, budget amendments.
This is the most exciting part of the meeting, I don't worry about it. Been up about it. Most important man in the room, he talks about the money.
Okay, before you, I've given you budget amendments for four pages. I'll go through these quickly, except for page two, I'll go through that with a little bit of background and detail on that budget amendment. But the first page, this is a budget amendment to the State Public School Fund. This is for P R C fifteen, and P R C stands for Program Reporting Code. That's usually a numbering system to identify a different pot of money within a ton. This is P R C fifteen, which is School Technology Fund. We received additional nine hundred seventy-three dollars and plan to use that for supplies and materials. Next page, this is a budget amendment to the federal fund, this is one, and I'll give some more detail on background too. This is for P R C one-ten, this is the Twenty First Century After-School Grant. As most of you are aware, this grant is typically four hundred thousand dollars per year. And we receive those funds in three installments. We receive the first installment October first, second installment, and third installment. Here's something I want to read to you, it's very important. Last school year, in order to receive the third installment, seventy-five percent of our students that are in the program, that's a hundred and thirty-five students, including the Otis and Colby Center, in order to receive that third installment, seventy-five percent of those students only needed fifteen or more tutoring hours, okay? This year, the game's changed. This year, that third installment, in order to receive that, seventy-five percent of our students must receive ninety or more tutoring hours. That's six times.
That's a big job.
Six times what's required from last year.
And you're.
So.
They would have to be there every day, basically.
Yeah, in my opinion, I, you know, I don't deal with that every day, but I have dealt with this my entire tenure. I don't know if that's actually attainable. It's very difficult, ninety-plus hours for seventy-five percent.
Almost every day.
Yeah, and we have K twelve, so we're competing with sports, jobs, I mean.
In order, these are, these, these are, this is a requirement, so.
And this is a federal grant?
This is a federal grant. So at this point in the year, we've not met that requirement. So we have to reduce our budget by one-third. Thirty-two percent is the actual number, and that represents a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars we have to take out of this budget.
When did we know that they had to have ninety hours, did that change the?
We, we were aware of this in March.
Wow, geez.
So.
So they changed?
It's sneaky.
I knew about it in November, so I was trying to keep track and I could steer with the change. Yeah, me and the grant, yeah.
Sure.
Could this be lost in translation somehow, that, did you, I mean?
No, it's.
They just asked.
Or, or we average it. For daily attendance or?
Yeah, well, well, two hundred.
Humanly number of days.
How many hours are we at now? Obviously, we're not there.
No, I would say fifty of those hundred kids that need to be have ninety hours, we have probably fifty of those.
That's very difficult, you know, it's very, extremely difficult to meet that requirement.
So this is gonna, we're gonna have to, after, you know, we get the, to the board media, we're gonna have to meet and discuss, and what little bit of funds we have remaining, do we finish tutoring for the rest of the year, or do we offer any kind of summer program? Which we were very dependent on this for a summer program, and so we're gonna have to, first, we get some guidance from the, from the state who monitor, help us monitor the federal grant, because that's also a part of, we're supposed to have a summer component to it.
A six-week summer component.
Yes, and so that's not gonna look very big. And so we're, those are some big decisions we're gonna have to make.
Sure, and we'll, we'll discuss that this week with a lot of vibe, everyone involved in what our plan actually is. And I think there's a requirement, you know, the six-week summer school, so that's not off the table.
Does that come out of here?
It does.
Yeah, summer school, yes.
Because I have already asked if we could do a grant amendment and do a shorter summer, and that is not possible.
Right, so, so what maybe I'll be coming back to the board and talking about is maybe making a little bit sooner than the G meeting, because we would like to go ahead and get staff in place and make some plans ahead of some of this.
So summer school is for grades?
K twelve.
For Twenty First Century?
Yes, Twenty First Century grade.
Sure, now what I have done is, individual at, she's the fiscal analyst, Monica Pass, with the Office of Federal Programs at D P I. I, I sent an email yesterday pleading that some kind of help. She's aware of what our situation is, anything that they can, any type of labor or whatever that they can give to us would help us. Because these funds, not only do we have to have those funds here in summer school, but these funds overlap our fiscal year, we need these funds until September thirty. So that's, that's the situation we're in with this budget.
Yeah, so the way this just works since it's federal money, and like last year, we didn't really, we didn't get started in September or October?
October.
October, because it's federal money, and so September thirtieth is the end of the federal year. And so, so really, you're looking from October till now to meet the, not just, I mean, really, that's a shorter time period anyway. I would, I would think that most of the, most of the school systems across the state are about the same what we are as meeting this requirement.
Yes, yes, so just looking at possibly no more tutoring? Possibly.
It's a possibility.
Yeah.
Because there are expenditures that we're required to make from now in September, and part of that is a contract with the Otis and Colby Center. So part of this budget amendment reduces their allotment of sixty thousand dollars by thirty-two percent. And they're aware of that, so that's what we're facing. But I won't go into the details of the line items in this budget amendment, but the reduction in this budget is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Next page, this is a budget amendment to the Capital Outlay Fund, and I'll give you a little bit of detail about this. I've spoken to you about expenditures that we have made out of local, that we're getting reimbursements for. I'm gonna be speaking about that. This particular budget amendment is for the H V A C, some units we call mini splits. That project is completed. We've made those expenditures out of our local account, because that's where we had funds available to do it. Like I said, that project is complete. I sent in a reimbursement request for lottery funds at D P I, we have received those funds. But this, these expenditures and revenues were in our local account, okay? This is a big ticket item, it's a capital project, it should show up in fund four, which is the Capital Outlay Fund, you'll see that in our line of new budget amendment there. I've already made general entries to move those expenditures and revenues into Capital Outlay based on recommendations of Anderson Smith and White Power Auditors. But this, not only are those expenditures, actual expenditure and revenues now in fund four, which also have to have a budget to mirror those actual expenditure and revenue. So that's what this budget amendment is, so.
But you're looking for reimbursement on that?
We've already received that reimbursement, yes. So the amount there for this project was two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and one dollars for those H V A C mini splits that were installed in the elementary, elementary buildings and also the gym action. The last page, this is a budget amendment to fund eight or two budget amendments. The first section there is Impact Day. Historically, I always budget conservatively for Impact Day, around six hundred thousand dollars each year. And during the year after, we have received our actual revenues, then I revise this budget. So we have received those revenues, and those revenues are approximately eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, so that's two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty thousand more than what our original budget. So we, I like to take these actual revenues and spread those out over other lines with the budget, so we know what we've actually got to spend and we don't go over that budget. Impact Day is a source of funding that helps our with our local, helps us with our local expenditure. The funding that we receive from the county, tenure receipts, et cetera, doesn't cover all of our local expenditures that we have, so Impact Day helps with our local budget.
So, Mr. Green, what's the, was that about the same or an increase or decrease based on the total revenue that we received last year?
Last year, the amount that we received was approximately six hundred and nineteen thousand total. So this year, there was an increase. I, I worked with Ned Long and his staff, and we really found a lot more students that are federally connected. That increases our revenue for Impact Day, so that's the reason for the increase. But again, that increase in the revenue and the budget expenditures is approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Next section down is P R C six fifty-five, this is a TIBI grant, there's no change in the revenues here, but it is realignment of some budget expenditures, so we're taking approximately six hundred and fifty-nine dollars out of staff training and moving that into sponsorship expenses. Any questions about the budget amendments?
Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green?
Motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
The local request, if you would please, you've got a packet there at the top of the South Graham County Schools. It's actually seven pages, the first one there says one of six, but there's Capital Outlay Need Budget at the end. If you will turn to page three, please. At the bottom of that page, you will see what our total allotment is for this fiscal year. It's one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. A little background, about that increase, several years, we've received one million dollars from the county. It's not, I met with the county commissioners and a couple of our state representatives last year. I presented a spreadsheet to them showing them what an increase would look like from that million dollars. That spreadsheet showed what the increase would look like if we were to receive a five percent increase each year afterward, seven and a half percent, ten percent. And they were graciously enough to opt for the seven and a half percent increase going forward. So this budget represents a seven and a half increase from what we're receiving currently this year. So that amount is the second lineup, that's one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Right here.
Same page, it's not above.
One million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, if you will, flip back to page one, I'll go through these P R Cs in just a little bit quickly, just so folks know part of our, what this funding represents. I'll, I'll speak about the P R C number in the description and just give the total budget. First section there is P R C seven oh six, this is local transportation. This doesn't involve yellow buses, local vehicles, total budget's a hundred and twenty thousand. Next section down is regular instruction, that's P R C eight oh one. The budget there is a hundred and ninety thousand, and the majority of this budget is made up of coaching supplements, referee expenses, a band supplement, and matching benefits to go with those expenditures. And also a vocational rehab contract there for fourteen thousand dollars. Again, that budget's a hundred and ninety thousand. Next section down is Board of Education, P R C eight ten, that's pretty explanatory, that budget is twenty-five thousand. Next page, this is Central Office, it's the expenditure made on behalf of this unit here. The total budget is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. You can scan down through it to see what those expenditures are for. Next section is Principal's Office, P R C eight twelve, the budget there is thirty-five thousand. The principals and assistant principal's supplements are paid from here, and also some supplies, materials, and contract services. Next section down, this is pro, this is the biggest pot of money within the local budget. This is operational plant, total there is four hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. It involves items like electricity, propane, water, telephones, and property insurance, property insurance, supplies, materials, and fuel. Next page. This is for maintenance, P R C eight fifteen, the budget there is three hundred thousand. You'll see a lot of items there for maintenance salaries, insurance contract, contracted services, et cetera. One thing to mention about maintenance and also operational expenditures, for custodial supplies and maintenance supplies, we try to pay a majority of their salaries out of P R C nineteen, that small school supplemental funding, which is in the state fund, and there's a reason for that. Those folks are more likely to have an ongoing job injury. So those folks, the majority of their salary benefits are paid out of state funds. We have two workers comp policies, one is paid by state and one is local. So the more folks that we have are paid out of state funds. So the more folks that we have are paid out of state funds, uh, it increases, uh, our ability to save some funds, uh, local funds.
Did you say PRC nineteen?
PRC nineteen and s- s- the state fund. Uh, next section down, other benefits, uh, this is simply insurance, the budget there is forty-five thousand, you'll see workers comp, what insurance and health insurance. In total, um, this, these PRCs represent the pots of money that, um, are involved with the, uh, allotment that we receive from county. And that, again, that budget is one million, uh, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, next page, these are two small budgets that we also have in fund two, uh, fines and forfeiture, which we receive from, um, clerk of superior court, total there is twenty thousand. Um, you'll see there workshop expansion forms and, uh, safety and security supplies. Uh, these funds, because we lost some of the safe schools funding through federal funding, we advocate these funds for the, um, school resource officers.
Yeah, we lost that because the federal government no longer provides it, not because we, we did, but I know this loss, they don't provide this federally.
Exactly.
Do these fines and forfeiture costs, is it quite? Or is it come from the clerk's office such as, is it a percentage?
Uh, I, I don't know what the formula is, but it's, uh, fines a day levy and statutory, some of those fines come to these school systems. And the forfeitures would be if they confiscated a vehicle unsold.
Yeah, okay, so that's a percentage.
Next section down is for service receipts and I always, um, budget this conservatively, uh, that's forty thousand. Uh, we use that to help with our operational expenditures, uh, but last year we received a hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, that's typically the level that, um, sometimes the federal government does not want to renew, you know, those, uh, those funds at the level we've been receiving. Historically, years ago, usually what we got was around forty to forty-two thousand dollars. So I always want to budget conservatively.
And we really won't know what that amount is till probably January, February of twenty twenty-four.
Well, we receive, we receive those funds usually in May or June.
Okay.
They flow to the county, um, and by law, if that amount is less than a hundred thousand dollars, we get a hundred percent of those timber receipts. If it's greater than a hundred thousand, then we get eighty percent and they get to keep twenty percent.
Then we won't know, I mean, the reason people are making budget point and think is because we don't know today, unless we still be coming to the local government, we won't know when it comes to this specific amount.
And this, we always budget this conservatively because, um, you know, we know that, um, we're going to get those funds later in the year and whatever those funds are, I revise the budget, just like we do in impact aid. Once those actual revenues come in, then I'll bump that up so that we know what we can actually have to spend. Okay? Um, next page, uh, this is a budget amendment, um, for impact aid. Uh, again, um, I'm mentioning here that I conservatively budget six hundred thousand dollars for those funds. We don't know what we'll receive next year, um, but this is a large budget, I won't go over in detail. Again, uh, this is just to help with our local expenditures in addition to county funding and timber receipts, et cetera. Most of those would be the operational expenditures that we have. The next page, uh, these will be budgeted revenues, those are listed there. Um, total revenues, this, you'll notice this will be in balance with the revenues that are presented on the previous pages. Total budget for, uh, fund two and fund eight, which also includes county funding is two million, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. If you approve that, that's what I'll be presenting to the county before May fifteenth. Um, the last page, uh, you'll notice if you look to the bottom of this page, it's highlighted there, this budget is a capital needs budget. Um, we've identified what some of our needs are and what goes in the capital budget, capital outlay budget, anything is five thousand dollars or greater, big ticket items like your HVAC, children's boilers, uh, vehicles, activity buses. Um, I'm not going to go over this in, in detail, we've got a list there, some of these are recurring items. But two that I really want to mention that we've identified in the last section down there, intercom systems for both campuses. We've, we've got a estimate there for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's a need, uh, that we discussed. Uh, another need is the last one there, the supports for the football field bleachers, that's also three hundred thousand dollars. Now, this total budget is eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of capital needs, doesn't mean we'll have the funds to meet all of these projects. And again, during the year, you're going to have capital projects that, um, that come about, it's not on this list that you have, you have no choice but to meet that need. So, um, it is, this budget is, these needs are typically, these are two double what our capital needs we've identified in the past, so typically it's going to be anywhere from two hundred and seventy-five thousand to four, to four hundred thousand. But those, those two there, again, are subject, I just want to bring that.
Yes, and just, and, and Mr. Moody Michael speaking, we're looking at the intercom and I know that, um, probably with Sawyer and Ms. Walsh can, can jump in from your campus, but, uh, we have pretty archaic systems for intercoms in the school and, and really that's a safety risk because if you're trying to get something out across the intercom, you could get all the way to the, you know, cafeteria or you could get all the way to kindergarten rooms or, or you could get, you know, it doesn't drive from middle school to high school. There's a lot of things that are connected to that and it's just an archaic system. I mean, looking at our high school building right now, it's got some age on it and, I mean, we still think of it as the new school, but it's not so new anymore, you know? So these are the kind of things that we've got coming up, that are going to be big ticket items and, and the other thing, talking about the football field bleachers and, and somebody here that has a little bit more historical knowledge, um, time wise, can think about this, but those bleachers have been there since the, when we decided.
Eighty-one, eighty-four.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's a long time. And so what we're looking at is the supports underneath those are shifting. At one point, one of the supports was within an eighth of a fork of an inch of, of coming off. That means they're almost sliding on the hill and crumble. There's some concrete crumbling underneath them and, and we're, you know, we, we do not, the investment in that, we're not prepared if someone would, would, to be hurt or, you know, or forbid, killed when those things come back. So, uh, we have done some things, uh, preventative, uh, work that I have to say, um, my maintenance staff, they didn't crawl under those big concrete bleachers and put their life in jeopardy to do what they've done. I can't say enough about that, you can't put a tag on what, how important that is. Um, but looking at the future, if we will be oak stadium, stay be oak stadium and we not want it, um, to have to shut down, we're going to have to look at what we're going to do to revise those porters. And this is probably a conversation too, that we can continue with the county commissioners and, because this is going to have to be a joint effort, we all do for that stadium on it. Um, but right now, that's something to say, you know, right now, we're, we've kind of patched a bigger problem.
Well, now we have help with the visitor set side, right? That's been redone.
It is, yeah, yeah. So, you know, just, these are just kind of, I'm going to refer to this capital outlet project list as kind of a wish list, some of it is absolutely necessary, but some of it is like everywhere we know it's going to happen. And we could, you know, we could put five times the amount of things out here that, that we wish would happen, uh, but these are some of the things that are coming up that we know for sure is going to have to, have to be dealt with in the, in the next little bit.
Is, is, is that the original intercom system over in the high school, middle schools? Has it ever, any big change?
It's had upgrades, but it's never changed.
It's in better shape than the elementary.
Yeah.
I started to say.
The dance was the elementary.
Did what?
There's the dance was bad.
That they can't hear.
Yeah. Always going to try to get radios, putting hands like handings here, it's like still the, sometimes communication.
Well, you, you probably can't hear in the gym, uh, there, if there's a bunch of kids.
It goes in the gym, but you can't hear it.
And you do, and the high school and middle school, the, the middle school, you, high school doesn't hear, but.
We can separate announcements, we can either do it to one school or two, but, but they tried to add some additional panels and the system's so archaic that they are no longer available, so they can't.
Is, is the capacity what it's doing right now and there's not really replacing parts, that's why we're.
I've got a question and this would be for Tanya and Erica. Uh, when I was teaching in the middle school, uh, if we got, got let out for snow or something like that, so many people, we didn't, this was before cell phones, so many people were trying to call out, you couldn't call out. Is it still that way?
That we've replaced the phone system since, meaning.
Oh, you have?
Then we went to IP address, systems and market, say, topic board, but we completely redid the, the phone system.
Okay, all right, that, that eases my mind, okay, thank you. All right, that is, that is right. All right, do I have a motion to approve the local current expense for the two thousand twenty-four budget year? Do I have a motion to approve that as presented by Mr. Green?
No, I haven't. Go ahead, go ahead.
Do I have a motion to approve the local current expense for two thousand twenty-four budget year as presented by Mr. Green?
So you're not revising it yet, is wrong, or you are?
I am, I will, I'm, I will next year, during the year, because those actual revenues will come in, we do that every year.
This is for this year?
No, this is for, this for year twenty-four. It'll start July one and goes on next June.
This is what we need, we will take this to present, so can I go?
For funding.
For next school.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend to you to approve this budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Well, so we're waiting on both of them, so.
Oh.
No, we're waiting, we're just waiting.
Okay, do you have questions, Mr. Green?
So we, we have to. This is our, this is the most budget we're going to take to the county.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a seven and a half percent increase of what we're receiving this year.
And they agreed to do that.
That was what they, uh, indicated last year, that, uh, they would go forward giving us a seven and a half percent increase each year there.
For, for, did they give them?
That's great.
Number of years?
They didn't give us that, you know, in time to that, so.
I mean, and that was last year, it was last year's supportive commissioner, so this is not a guarantee, that that was her recommendation.
That's true.
You got my hat.
All right, you got that, that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. You got a question? All right. Is that it, Mr. Green?
I've got the, uh, permission to use, uh, activity buses. And I'll, I'll give that to you for example, that is for St. Colville Valley Center. And this, this will be real short, uh, this is just a resolution authorizing use of activity buses, uh, and act, it's for St. Colville Valley Center and, uh, they request that they can use, uh, our activity buses for their summer school. And we can renew this every year around this time of April night.
So we, this is not you?
This is not you.
Are we pretty stretched on activity buses in the summer?
I think, I think we are.
I think we're pressed in general because we need, we need some new ones, one run out, much shots.
So in other words, you got to jump in there quick if you want that kitty bus, if you have something on that.
There's a lot of miles on those buses.
Well, not only that, it's just, it's, I mean, you need that kitty bus, you need that kitty bus and it's, but, but these are our kids that are going over there.
Yes, we make that available for a few years first.
Just one week?
It's one week.
Oh, oh, one week?
It's just for one week.
Oh, okay.
And they may not even use our bus, but this gives them the authority or, uh, the, uh, they'll be able to use of, uh, an activity bus in the.
I mean, they take them from the town out there to go.
And they use their drivers. They contract their drivers.
I like it.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing use of the activity buses and this would be for Mr. Colville.
I make a motion to authorize the use of activity buses, St. Colville Center, for the summer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Um, now one other, uh, documents or a set of documents I'll give to you after a closed session will be the expenditure reports and the important part of that is second page where you can see where we are during the year, whether we're over or under budget in a particular fund. I give those out every month, second half of the year, so I'll have those out, um, when we come back in the process.
Okay. Inform consent, Ms. Dean.
Yes, informed consent policy, I probably should say, I am going to make the motion for a policy. Um, informed consent, I'd like to see it put in place in rules of opt-out options. Opt-out options is embedded in there, you can't get rid of it and, and everything. I've, I've been looking at it for months, months, and I've thought about it and thought about it, prayed about it, talked about it, God is only tired. But we can't get rid of it, so the opt-out options, I kind of look at it like I'm boxing it up and I'm sitting it over here and I know it's there and there's nothing I can do about it. So, in order to have, um, parents make the decision, opt-out options obviously leave the parents in a kind of a weird position. If you don't know to opt out, your kid automatically goes in, it's like automatically, which is not informed consent, it's opposite of that. And obviously, I'm, I'm into constitution, so that sounds constitutional to me, sounds like the right thing to do. We can have opt-out options because obviously we can't get rid of them, but we also could have a policy where it's informed consent, parents have to decide whether they want these kids and these things. Now, I don't know if this survey is a part of an opt-out option, but I believe, I, I've been doing a little surveys and talking to people, you know, not one, well, one, but out of all the people I spoke to about opt-out options at school, they didn't even know what it was. And when I told them, they were mad about it. So, I, I didn't really have anything to go on during that time, but now I do. I can tell you right now, after I seen this, this, this is an eighth grade survey that was done in the auditorium. And it has a question on if it goes against, I don't know if it goes against everybody else's brain, but it does mine. It's a gender question. Now, I said this eighth graders, okay, I'm not talking about adults, I'm talking about children. It says, what is your gender? Male, female, non-binary, EG, gender fluid, agender, other. Now, I, I wouldn't have, I'm not saying we shouldn't kind of go along a little bit with the woke stuff because we're going to have to, but we didn't have to say all that, I put me instead of other. You know, I am telling you right now, those parents are just furious about this stuff because they don't introduce stuff like that. Picture yourself sitting down at dinner with the pastor and your child says, I have a, a gender question in my eighth grade survey today. I mean, your, the mutter will fall on the floor when you say, non-binary and gender fluid. Now, I don't know if you know how serious, but kids look kind of funny about this stuff and they want to look it up. I'm just warning parents right now, if there's people that got children listening on the thing, I'm just going to warn you right now, I'm about to say something, I don't want kids to look up. But if they start looking this stuff up, guess what they can find? Something called a map. Now, all of us just had a map picture, right? What's a map look like? No, a map according to these things comes up and it's mature with a minor attracted person, a minor attracted person. Paul Parton, you know, from the forum, the BP, she, she sent me something on that and she said, you won't believe it, I said, I'll believe anything, but that was pretty bad. When I looked it up, it made me sick. This is the picture of that, I would hate for any of our kids to start getting it all funny and looking this up. So my daughter said, Mom, eighth graders probably know a lot about all this stuff, but I'll bet you there's plenty of little eighth grade kids that are not up on this. And we introduced this in our school system, we're influencers. I mean, influencers introduced this, it makes it legit. Is there just male and female or am I wrong? Does science change? Male and female, that's all there is. If you're going to put other, just. If you're going to put other, just a passerby will find, but to put that in there, this is wrong. So I don't know if this is, we can't say if this is opt-out or not, I mean, opt-out option with this.
Is, excuse me, is that, what's our ready?
It's a GEAR Up survey.
And you're at, you're at the state, correct? It's, it's a federal, and I'm shell, I don't know if that comes through, we don't have Ms. Williams here today to...
I will say that after that survey was given, they, our school system did request that we just put other. I don't know whether your survey's been a good one, but it was a request that we made on about half the schools this time.
Well, we're kind of, we're falling into this stuff, just, we don't mean to, nobody here means to do it. I don't think anybody needs to do it. This is what it needs to know, pay attention to what's coming in here. But God be a God, he kind of gave me the informed consent policy. And I called the North Carolina School Board Association and I spoke to a nice lady who lived in Mrs. Boyd. And she actually did the, the spring conference on law. I recognized her voice as soon as I started talking to her. And, and I asked her about making a policy, can we make a policy informed consent that we pass at a local board? That would mean that parents have a say if they want their kids to take this stuff or not. And then I could feel like I didn't like constitutional duty. And also, I can't sell opt-out to parents and I can't sell it to Jesus. So if we can't sell it, let's do, let's do something that's constitutional, that we're a conservative Christian board, all of us. We have conservative Christian values. Parents are important to us and so is the constitution. So if we pass a policy of informed consent, it would be set down in the school system and no parent has to wonder if their kids are taking this, you're going to know it against, and then you can say yes or no. And doesn't that sound like what I'm going to do?
Ms. Washington, was eighth grader?
Yes, and I would like to, I would like to speak up on that, on that survey. That survey is a GEAR Up survey. It comes from App State. We've received lots of funding, I don't know where Mr. Green went, but from GEAR Up. And that is not, that is one of the questions at the top, but the survey goes in-depth about college and knowledge about college and all of that. Ms. Williams gave the survey to the students in the, in the auditorium. She read every question and when it came to that, she said, mark, male or female. So in that context, she addressed it, but because it's federal funds and because it comes from a university, they require that. As if, if you get any emails from anyone from a university right now, they are required to use their pronouns, which I disagree with, but that is a requirement because of how they receive funding. And all of the communication from App State underneath their name, they will have the proteins, their pronouns listed.
Okay.
That's consistent.
Thank you.
That's consistent with what a student also, this is a hot dog I'm about to, a student told his dad, then his dad told me. And it's exactly what they said, that you guys went over everything and that it was, it was kind of trying to be controlled. So yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't believe y'all.
And nothing, we did not linger up on that question because the need of the survey is about college and knowledge about college.
Did they have to take the survey?
Yes.
Every student had to?
How much money do we receive from GEAR Up?
This year's budget, I'd have to go back and look, but it changes each year, but you're talking about $150,000 a year.
Yeah, I've seen that, I've seen that. And that's, I understand. We're doing, we're doing this because we do need the money. I understand. But Letitia Wiggins spoke at a meeting and you know what she said? She said, you know, there was something trying to come in. You guys remember her, she goes, we're talking about it. She said, there was something trying to come in, you said, I know that's not going to go through Grand County, people aren't going to like it. And you told Ms. Knapp or Ms. Sun, Ms. Knight, and Ms. Knight agreed, and then I'm not sure how you handled that, or if you had told her.
That was an option whether or not we did that.
Yes. It was a survey that is often generated through the Department of Public Instruction and it was a survey that had some far-reaching questions and we'll just leave it at that.
Yes, and you stood up, didn't you? And I'm telling you, now, so you're a mom, if you know, other people don't see.
It was optional and we discussed that at the state level when we thought that for our students, that it was probably not the most appropriate action to take.
I'm not pushing it. That's a human mom because I'm telling you, I was...
Is there, is there a way we can let parents know that we are going to give a survey any time? Have we shoot it out there, something, saying tomorrow, your, your eighth grade student is going to take a, whatever that survey is?
It's pretty invasive and I did ask him, I put on my notes, I always put notes and stuff, everything was okay. I got okays on everything going through here. And then my first page, I think it was too invasive. I guess what I would like to see is I'd like to see the parents look at this and say, what their kids are being asked to answer on, on a survey. I'm, I'm telling you, when Annabelle gets to this, this grade, I'm going to, I'm going to really not want to see her take that. We don't talk about this stuff in our house. We, we, we're going to run into this and as a matter of fact, I got links for folks, I've got transgender, gay friends, I, I got every kind of friend you can imagine. I love people, I don't have anything against anybody. But they will tell you, my friends will tell you, don't introduce this to the kids. Their own selves, they wish I could not to do. So I'd like to see all of this, the parents see if they agree, then they agree. But aside from that, if this didn't even have an opt-out policy with it, huh, just was required.
It was required for us to receive funding.
Okay, so that, I've got one.
And I will speak up and say that regardless of what anybody wants to believe, the kids are talking about these things.
Oh, absolutely.
And as far as my personal child would go, I would think it would open a door as a parent to have those conversations with them when they might not mention that at all. But I can guarantee you that I, the kids are talking about it, they have heard about it. Urban Dictionary, I don't know if you are familiar with that, but I use it every day so that I will know what kids are talking about.
I hear you.
And I'm stunned sometimes, but...
I hear you, I do believe. Well, I just think that we can, I'm a bell provider, like, I'll, I'll come. So what I, what I keep, I didn't come up, but I felt like God just put it in my heart. You need, you need to start a, 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 a place where we have parents decide on everything in here and actually liability wise, I don't think, because then, I don't know, I don't have to make the decision, they make the decision. So it's called informed consent policy. And when I spoke to the attorney about it, I asked her point blank, can we make a policy of like this? And she said, of course, people do it all the time. So our board, we could just make that. And I think that I would appease the parents because I don't think, every person I show all this stuff to, they just get mad. And it's, I don't know why I don't know this, well, I don't know either. It's coming to me and I can't do nothing with it. So this is what I'm doing. All right, so I make a motion. Oh, I didn't tell you what can happen with it. We're going to have these kids that are not going into these surveys. How long did this survey take?
Since she read it to him, 20, 30 minutes.
So 30, 20, 30 minutes, they could have been in something else or actually focused on test scores. Mr. Matheson said, we got test scores, you're not going to like them, we can't rank code. So how I saw, this is how I've dealt with it. But anytime you have an opportunity, take the time to start teaching the kids, you know who's going to be in these opt-out classes. Well, they won't be in their surveys, they won't be in their parents' own group. So let's use them for times when we teach people. And don't teach them how we teach them, teach them how they learn. When I didn't know how to do math and I, I went back to school, I had a GED book, Teach Me Math. Nothing could teach me math, but that GED book did because it used a approach I've never seen before. And of course, I got my GED. Can you imagine using that policy here? Whatever that was, that we use that in here, all the kids that are getting low test scores in math could in just a few weeks be up to level to take a GED test because I have, and I passed and I'm on to work EBS.
Okay.
We have a policy committee, and so that's what you've always relied on.
Right.
Is the policy committee will review and come back to the board with it. And you really are assigned by the General Assembly with the powers to run the school and make decisions.
Right.
Parents are involved pursuant to state law to be required, but we can't transfer liability to parents. The school board is charged with about 62 duties that you shall do to operate the school.
Right.
One of them is come up policy and you don't, you go to your staff and you have a policy committee.
Okay, so why, we need, we need to have a motion to charge the policy committee to look at... To look at a informed consent policy.
We have to do opt-out, that's both federal and state. Parents have received notice, which is part of the policy that you already have. So we already have a lot of that and perhaps the policy committee can inform the board of what you already have. As well as look at opt-out.
So we...
And if Ms. Dinsel has some information as opposed to just statements, if she has some written information that she could provide.
For what?
For that policy consent.
Do we already do informed consent here?
Well, I thought that's what you, yes, we do.
Oh, I was going to say, I was kind of...
I thought you wanted to make, I thought you said we didn't.
No, I'm not the, no, no, I see what you're saying. No, I know we have to keep the opt-out stuff and there's nothing I can do, I've already put it over here on the show, but opt-in policies are in here. So just the same policy as always, when, when people go on trips, parents have to give them permission.
So you're wanting informed consent for surveys?
For surveys, for anything where a parent has a choice, I don't care, because I don't know, I keep, I'm finding out though, is there somebody...
Why don't you make a motion to refer to the policy committee to pull together? David Matheson heads that up, Erica Sawyer, I think she's on two or four parents.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, and instead of just making a decision, I don't, I know so little, I'm going to wait and I'm going to call back to this attorney and I'm going to speak to her and I'm going to ask for how other boards do it. You know what I'm saying?
So be examples.
Yeah, and then that might help you guys where other boards have made decisions and said, we just, we take an arbitrary approach to this because we can't, we do have the power to do it.
Well, this board has a policy committee. They assign to the policy committee things they need help with and come back and decide to change it, add to it, whatever, so.
So are you saying that they don't, let's see?
I don't know what you're saying, but there's the procedure on this board, you say have a policy committee. You're wanting information on informed consent. This board can, you can make a motion to sign that to the policy committee.
Okay, so what I'm taking that from you is you're saying that's the only way to do it. That if I say, make a motion in here and Pam wants to set it in, and, because we only need three, and one other one wants to do it, that's not a, that we can't make a policy that way, that's not a way to make a policy.
No, you cannot make a policy that way.
You have to have a policy that has it written down.
Yes, okay, okay. There, then that's a way to say it, because you need it written down, it can't just be...
And you could bring some information if you want to call back and find that board or buy that book on the policy committee and give them the information.
Well, I think Angie can direct this.
We'll get it, we'll get it from the side.
Okay. And then if I need to add it in as a survey, a policy for survey time, then we'll work it out. That sounds good, I'm, I'm happy with that.
So can we make a motion?
No.
Okay, personnel, Ms. Knight?
During closed session, I will be bringing some names for teacher assistants.
Teacher assistants.
For the next school.
Okay, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to go into closed session. Pursuant to provision of North Carolina General Statute 143-30181.11, parentheses A, parentheses 3, and 143-318.11, parentheses C, I move the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, attorney for Grand County Schools of the, Grand County Board of Education, which comes in this review of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal issue, advice about legal issues and legal matters. Pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11C, I move the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, parentheses A, parentheses 6, and the North Carolina General Statute 115C-321.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Yep.
So Jonathan made a motion, can I have a close? Can open session and a second and one more session?
That's right.
And I will pay.
I will pay, yes. I've lost all my pages. You want me to say that? You have to make the ready. I'm ready.
So I would recommend that you employ the following four people for instructional substitutes for the FY '24 school year, next year. Erica Daniels, Kinsley Phillips, Haley Chris, and Christie Oden.
Do I have a motion to employ for fiscal year '24? The, the following teacher assistants, Erica Daniels, Kinsley Phillips, Haley Chris, and Christie Oden. Do I have a motion to employ these four young ladies?
Yes, I make a motion to employ those four.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Anything else, any announcements?
Uh, yes, so the next meeting of the Board of Education will be a special call meeting on May 25th at 10:00 a.m.
Ms. Knight, we will be able to have her do...
Paul would want me to have one, the first one can do, but I may, depending on personnel and what people hire, we may have to call another special call meeting and then maybe we may want to live with energy to clarify financial, end of the year things. Another thing that I would like to do while we're here for the benefit of Ms. Klein is there are some upcoming events and we need to let our high school know who will be in attendance. So the, I believe the first event is May 16th, which is the...
The academic banquet?
Yes.
It's at 6 o'clock on a Tuesday.
And so who plans to be there, well, Willie would take a perfect sign in a meal count. So he may be there, he may not go today.
You'd better use the couch where one...
And you're welcome to bring some...
Erin's definitely coming.
So two for you, okay? And then I've already talked to Hank and I've talked to Pam, but that, Pam's told me everything, Hank has too. So the next one is May 18, athletic banquet at 6 o'clock.
I'm sure of that. That's a Thursday.
Okay, and then the next one is banquet at May 24th and that's on a Wednesday at 8 o'clock.
Does everybody continue to get back to all this?
Yeah.
On Wednesday, the 24th.
24th, and then graduation will be on Friday, May 26th at 8 o'clock.
Can I ask you a question too? I'm not...
It's supposed to be me, not Miss Chris.
Are they still going to do the athletic banquet at the football stadium?
They do it in the commons area because they feed.
Well, they did, one year they did on the football field, it was COVID. Two years ago they did it. It, it went back last year inside, I would say, inside again, and back at the commons area.
How did they feed them on the football field?
They literally pulled out grills and grilled off the hamburger, they sure did.
We'll find out.
I know they're cooking black lighters, so I don't know if it's...
No, I actually don't really answer that.
Are you cooking, what is your name? Denise?
Yeah, Robert, are you cooking?
Do I have a motion to poke the general camera?
That's what I brought in February, October.
She said the 18th to start with, I'm pretty sure.
It's a Monday night, the 10th is 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, I had it, my chart had it different.
It was, that one, I wanted that last night. It was, that one, I wanted that, that's me.
Okay, so, Monday, the twenty-second is the athletic. Does that make a difference to anybody?
Uh, they said it up, so, determined yet if it's going to be an inside or out, whether it's good, they'll have a football field, it's by, they'll...
Oh, okay.
Alright, cool.
Okay, Ms. Green, real, real quick, these are expenditure reports, the most important, well, the top page is expenditures for April.
We'll scan through for each one. The important page is the second page. And on that second page, the bottom line down there will tell you whether we are over budget or under budget on any particular fund. So, on that second page there... It's a little light. Yes, Fund Two is over budget by twenty-seven percent, and that statutory, that will not happen, we will correct that. We will move expenditures that we typically, uh, make out of Fund Two, we'll go over to Fund Eight, being paid out of impact data. Now, that's those funds that help us with our local expenditures. Fund Eight, we're under budget by sixteen percent, State, we're over budget by seventy percent. And again, we'll move some of those expenditures over into local. Federal, we're under budget by thirty percent. Child nutrition, we're under budget by fifteen percent, and capital outlay, we're under budget by thirty-seven percent. So, I just, uh, uh, need to get those to you every month, at least the second half of the year, so you know how we're doing with our bill.
Oh, bless you.
No, you don't, those are just for information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?